How is it doing? Just really extreme circumstances.
Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
He has an excused absence. He told me a couple of weeks ago he would be gone this evening.
Councilmember Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
He will be late.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first on our agenda is possible action on a reappointment of Virginia Foley and Brian Erdialis to new terms on our planning commission. Mr. Curtis.
In your packet, it was the applications we received. They liked being on planning commission. We'd asked that they'd be reappointed. We haven't received any other applicants.
Do you have any vacancies on the...
No, I think that keeps us full if I remember.
I would entertain a resolution accepting two appointments.
Your Honor, I do... Sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
Reappointment.
I offer a resolution for the reappointment of Virginia Foley and Brian Erdialis to new terms on the planning commission.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of five to zero with council members Anderson and Marler absent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution authorizing the city to join and designate a representative to the board of an investment pool with PFM Asset Management. Ms. Kenny and Mr. Blackwood.
Hello, I'm Chris Blackwood. I work for PFM Asset Management. We are investment advisors to the city. We have been for a number of years now. We started talking to the city staff a number of months ago about a new local government investment pool that we are creating with other governments in the state to invest funds more efficiently with the city. This investment pool will initially have four governments in it. It'll have, you know, have City of Fort Morgan, Weld County, Highland Drench Metro District, and Centennial Water and Sanitation District. We spent the past nine months working with legal counsel to draft all the requisite documents. We just finished a couple hours ago a briefing to the investment committee of the city to discuss this in detail. We've had multiple discussions with the staff and with the city manager about this. And so the investment pool will probably be up and running in a few months. We are going to the other governing boards here in the next two weeks to get this all approved and up and running here within the next month or two.
So, we took this today to the investment committee, and it was approved and recommended that we go ahead and move forward and get involved with this. It essentially gives us an option that's better than a money market account, which is what we're currently using to park money in between investments and gets us a better return on those investments. And we've looked at some of the questions that had come up that were raised by legal in the process about making sure that our investment policy matched up, and we were meeting all the legal requirements, and we've resolved all of those issues. And we don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to look at something that's going to provide a better return on our investments while we're in various processes. Sometimes you just need liquid investments that you got a project coming up and you want to be able to take them out, or you have something you want to put a bit long-term that may expire and you pull them out. You want to park them somewhere, and this will get us a little bit better return than what we're getting right now.
And I guess I will also tell you, we are going to have a board of trustees that is completely comprised of government officials, and Jeanne Kenny will be on that board of trustees.
So it gives us another level of control you don't have from a money market account at a bank.
Mr. Blackwood, how many... Do you foresee other government groups joining?
Oh, yes. We hope to have hundreds eventually.
Okay.
We run a money market fund now in the state for governments that's got 65 investors in it. And so frankly, almost all of them are waiting for this legal process to get done so that they can join. So this is sort of the linchpin to the process.
So we're standing in your way.
No, you're not standing in your way. You're leading the pack.
Leading the way.
You're the first one. And then we got two more next week.
All right.
You like to be leaders of the pack.
Yeah.
Well, and when Chris brought this to our attention as an opportunity and kind of the process, obviously, we were very skeptical is not the right word, but we asked a lot of questions and make sure that everything is right and was going to work for the city of Fort Morgan, and really appreciate them working on a product that's going to work better for us down the road.
It does give us a lot more diversity with what we can do with our funds, as well as hopefully a better return on our investments. Then we also reviewed our investment policy, which was brought up to date, and that was previewed at our finance meeting, finance committee earlier. So it looks like a worthwhile project for the city.
We certainly hope so.
You won't guarantee anything, will you? You always have that disclosure at the bottom.
I didn't say any word to the letter G. Sorry.
Does anybody else have any questions, or have they had an opportunity to review what was in our packets? I would entertain a resolution authorizing the city to join in the...
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution for the city of Fort Morgan to join the Colorado statewide investment pool as a participant.
Second.
I have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Five to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Blackwood or Jeanne? I have some air. Next, we have a presentation by Nathan Harmon of the Fort Morgan High School and his Eagle Scout project and a request to donate bat houses to the city.
Hello, my name is Nathan Harmon. First, I need to plug in PowerPoint. All right. So again, sorry. My name is Nathan Harmon. I'm a scout in the Fort Morgan troop, and I'm here to present a possible Eagle Scout project. On why I chose bats for my Eagle Scout project, the main reasons are that bats are important, and they're threatened, and they're very misunderstood. So bats are important to communities and the environment because they provide pest control. Many bats will consume their body weight in insects, so that's a lot of insects, especially when there's a lot of bats altogether. And throughout the U.S., scientists estimate that bats save farmers $3.7 billion and reduce crop damage and pesticide use. Bats are also good for pollinating. They, of course, will bring the pollen from other plants when they are feeding on the nectars. And they also help to disperse seed of different plants. So they really help the environment, and they're good to keep around. Another reason to protect the bats or provide houses for the bats is that they're threatened. Bat populations are declining very rapidly around the globe. As you can see, 26 bat species are marked as critically endangered. That means that here, if we don't take action in the next few years, those species could be gone. 51 other species are endangered, and 954 other species are vulnerable. The causes are mainly by loss of habitat for them being threatened, and that's just people cutting down forests or like getting into caves for tourism and like shutting down mine shafts. That's where a lot of the bats will live. Also, in, not in America, but in some southern, South American countries, bats are hunted. But mainly here in America, it's just they don't have a place to live. So the bat boxes will help with that. Many people, their main points against having bats are like wanting bats around is because they misunderstand them. They don't realize that they're very beneficial to the environment. And it's some of the myths about bats that people don't really know is that bats are bloodsuckers. Only certain bat species that don't live in America consume blood. All the bats around here are just, they consume bugs and plants. And people think that all bats are rabid, which is untrue. Bats don't really get rabies. And another one is that bats can't see very well. That doesn't really have that big of an importance, but it just shows that we people don't really understand bats. So the bats in our community are all, for the most part, part of the myotis genus, which is a very small amount, a small-sized bat, and they don't pose any threat to humans. And they often can find their ways into undesirable locations such as attics or garages. And one of the best ways to keep bats out of your garage is to put, give them a home to live in. And so my solution to this is it's a bat box similar to this. It mounts on a wall, and the bats will land here and climb up in there. And they'll, this will hold, I think, 200 bats is what it says. They'll get in there, and they'll keep themselves warm with the dark coloring in the wood and then the collection of bats. And that's just mounted on a wall, and it doesn't really do anything other than help them. They're just 14, 14, they work for all 14 species of bat found in Morgan County. Easy to maintain and install. You just have to make sure there's not mud covering up the opening and make sure that wasps don't get in. And they have such a low profile, and they won't really affect the visual appearance of any city buildings. So my proposal, if you guys accept, will be to give 20, 20 bat boxes, fully constructed and ready to install. And my only thing is I would like the boxes to be put up on city buildings such as the armory or down in the parks to help control mosquitoes and other bugs. So if that's approved, and that's my presentation.
Very good.
How many bats, I'm sorry, how many bats did you say can fit in that?
200. You can fit 200 in there.
So how large is the average Morgan County bat?
A little smaller than a mouse. They're not very big. When their wings are curled up and they're crawled in their houses, they're pretty small.
Do you have to do something to attract them to those houses, or do they find them on their own?
That's actually a really good question. Batcon.org, which is a bat conservation website, says that the bats are actually really good at finding spaces for them to live on their own. So when they're out hunting for bugs at night, they'll, they'll see the crevice, and they'll go and investigate it. And once they realize that it's like a good place for them to live because of the size and the fact that it's going to be pretty warm because of the dark coloring, they'll basically go and tell the other bats to come live there too.
Party in the park.
And it'll help too, because Jenny's putting it, you know, they're going to put it on the, you know, in the newspaper and on the radio, so the bats will find out.
Get the radio.
Still doesn't spread as fast as word of bat.
Right, because it's radio waves.
Nathan, I got a question about where we mount these things. Does it, do they produce a lot of guano? Is it going to be someplace where we're going to want to, are we going to have to clean up after it? What's the, what's the maintenance requirements after they're on the building?
There's not very much maintenance required. A lot of it will just like dry up and blow away. And really, the only maintenance required is keeping track, keeping the wasps out. One of the problems is that wasps will try and build a nest. So you can just use different wasp sprays and like try and clear out the wasps' nests, but the guano won't really be an issue. It'll just either like degrade or blow away or rid of itself.
How do you, I guess, how do you, I guess, from the wasp, because aren't the bats in there during business hours?
The bats aren't there all year round. They migrate south on different parts of the year. So in the, in the winter, they'll be down in like Texas, and in the summer, they'll be up here. So in the winter, the wasps, or like in the fall, when the bats leave, the wasps will burrow and make a nest and burrow for the winter.
Perfect. Did not know they went south for the winter.
Any other questions?
Sounds like a great idea to me.
All right. So I guess what we'd like to have council do is either do a motion or a resolution, if this is something you'd like to do, directing the city manager to move forward and find places for the boxes to be installed. And we'd probably work with Parks Department. And I know we do have some bats that like to hang out at the armory, so that might be a really good place to give them a more decent home. So...
I don't think they go to Texas and...
No, they, they like to work out. They're there all the time.
We're year-round bats.
But yeah, if you directed us to work with Nathan to find places to put these up, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, when I saw it on the agenda, I thought that this was going to be something that we were going to be doing, a Legion Field with bat boxes. I was thinking the wrong kind of bat, but I would offer a resolution that the city accepts Nathan's donation of bat boxes and to be placed about the city.
Second.
Do you want a resolution? Sure, it's a resolution then. I have a resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
We will hang your bat boxes. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the education.
Good research, Nathan.
So does that mean he gets his Eagle Scout?
Pretty much, pretty long process after this. Yeah, they built them all.
They have really low profile.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Morgan County RE3 school district regarding the school resource officer.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Police Department would ask for your approval to continue with our intergovernmental agreement with the Morgan County School District for school resource officers. This program has proven to be very effective. We have one school resource officer, Officer Tim Malone, and he has formed a very solid partnership with the community, the youth, students, and the staff at the school district, and it's time for the yearly renewal of the contract.
Just housekeeping, basically?
It's housekeeping.
There's no changes I'm aware of in the IGA.
Yeah. So does Officer Malone continue doing this?
Very much so.
Does he want to get back on the road?
No, he wants to stay in the schools.
No, this is, this is a really good service that we offer and help and coordinate with the school district. We, we support 60% of the cost of the school resource officer. It was a grant-funded program for three years. When it ended, the school wanted to see them stay on. We wanted to see them stay on. Under this agreement, we pay 60%. Now, the interesting thing of that is, and this is where the school district really benefits, and how we benefit from this, is we pay 60%, and we get that person one month out of the year. They cover 60% of the costs, and we get them back in the summer for about, about a month. Then they do training and vacation and everything, because during the school year, they're busy. The benefit that we get is that we have presence in the school, which I think is paramount for safety of kids, and it's really important. But, you know, I always like to point out the great benefit that we have with that partnership with the school district and what we help them with by way of safety within the school. And one of the things that they'd like to look at down the road is potentially have another school resource officer. And I know that that's something that the chief is working on. But this is a great program. It's great partnership. You know, we pick up the lion's share of the costs for what they get, and I think it benefits both sides.
I absolutely agree. The officer assigned there is a good role model. He's a good coach, provides a positive presence, and also safety for the kids. We very much would like to continue with this.
And he has a unique car.
Yes, he does.
The nicest car in the fleet.
Yeah, that was pretty, pretty special. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Morgan County RE3 school regarding the school resource officer. Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Next, we have a presentation and a possible action, a bid for a pickup for the Parks Department. Mr. Duke.
Good evening, everybody. This is for the purchase of a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton crew cab pickup to be utilized by the Parks Department. It's approved in the 2017 capital improvement budget in the amount of $30,000. This new vehicle will replace a 1992 Chevy extended cab pickup with a standard transmission and over 80,000 miles. This truck has had two clutches replaced in the last 10 years, and this pickup will be sold at the next available city auction. An advertisement for bids was placed on the city's website on February 28th and made available at City Hall. The bid opening was held on March 4th, where there were nine bids received, with Bradley Bar Ford of Greeley coming in with the lowest bid with options at $27,419. The next lowest bid was from John Elway Chevrolet for a Dodge Ram with the options at $29,462. Therefore, staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Bradley Bar in the amount of $27,419 for a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton Ford F250 crew cab pickup to be utilized by the Parks Department. Staff is also requesting approval for the purchase of decals and miscellaneous items to complete the truck from the same line item in the budget. Therefore, staff is requesting council approval of expenditures not to exceed $30,000 for the purchase of the pickup decals and miscellaneous items to complete it for city use.
Is this one an automatic, so we don't have the temporary staff riding the clutch and causing it to need to be replaced so frequently?
Definitely an automatic. It's amazing how many part-time staff, especially even full-time staff, they can't drive a standard transmission. It really is hard on the...
Sliding the clutch hurts.
Yeah, yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions of Mr. Duke?
No, I would say no local bidders.
No, there were no local bidders on this.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the bid from Bradley Bar in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for a four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton Ford F250 crew cab pickup to be utilized by the Parks Department.
Second. I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have fun with the bat houses. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on bids for a mid-size pickup for the building inspector.
Can we install bat cams?
Mr. Kirkendall.
Evening. Well, since we have a new inspector from, started last June, we've been utilizing the 1996 GMC Sonoma for him to drive around in, and it's starting to find a home right behind you in the maintenance shop with the city mechanic. So I think it's time we get a new vehicle. And this one will make its way finally to the city auction, next available city auction. Anyway, we went out to bid, and obviously, city staff had sent out some emails directly to people that we dealt with last time, and we only got four responses, and two of them were incomplete. So, and one of them was a full-size pickup instead of a mid-size pickup. So we're recommending that the council approve the Corf Continental Chevrolet Ford Colorado four-by-four for the cost of $29,760. We have a line item of $35,000, and we would request that we have the ability to use no more than $35,000 to get all of the radio and decals and stuff like Doka just referred to get the city, the pickup ready to be used for a city vehicle.
So a two-wheel-drive pickup is more expensive than a four-wheel-drive pickup?
Well, ours is a four-wheel-drive pickup too.
Oh, well, true. Where did I read that? I must have missed that. So it's similar to what we just approved for the Parks Department?
Mine's just a, for whatever reason, the mid-size and small vehicles are a little bit more expensive. So ours is a little bit smaller, but when you're unloading and loading ladders off and on it, when you get the full-size pickup, some of us that have height challenges have a bit difficult pulling the ladders off. So that's why we requested the smaller vehicle.
Those people will remain nameless, right?
I won't name myself standing in front of you. So... And this, with the cost we got, this will also give us the, some options for ladder rack toolboxes. Then it'll have an extended cab on it so we can store our books and stuff that we need and stuff that shouldn't be out in the weather.
Do you have any other, have you ever had the old one that would work on this?
No, because it's the, for some reason, 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, those vehicles seem to be, don't match anything that you can get now. So ladder racks and toolboxes don't transfer over very well. And the toolbox and the ladder racks is the same age, so it's, they're not in real good shape either, so...
Any other questions of Mr. Kirkendall? If there are none, I would entertain action.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving the bid from Corf Continental in an amount not to exceed $35,000 for a Chevrolet Colorado four-by-four pickup for, for the building inspection department. Sorry, couldn't remember what it was for.
Second.
I have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you. And I don't think I'll be around for the next one.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on two irrigation wellhouses. Mr. Sagel.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Well, we're looking to replace two of the wellhouse buildings that we have in the irrigation system and the distribution system. The first one is the Park Street Well, and that one is the one that feeds the irrigation water for Fulton Park and the yard in front of it. That building is a cinder block construction, and right now... That building is a cinder block construction, and right now, the roof needs a complete replacement. The building is starting to separate in many of the mortar joints of the cinder blocks, and just with every year, it becomes more and more of a safety hazard. We've been trying to maintain it as much as we could without putting a whole lot of money into it, and we're just to the point now, it looks like we probably better just replace it. It used to have emergency backup generator in it, and we've had that removed, but of course, the holes for all of that stuff is, they're still in the building, and so, new building, we can better insulate it and protect it and protect the equipment that's inside of it, so. The second one is the Vicki Street Well, and that's the well that feeds Optimus Park. That one is a little bit newer, but it's still cinder block construction, and it's showing noticeable separation in the cinder blocks on that as well. The roof needs to, not the full replacement, but the shingles are bad on it, and the biggest problem with that one is it has a tendency to flood every time we have a heavy downpour. The surrounding area drains down and it flows right into the doorway, and so, we have standing water in there whenever we have a good rainstorm. That one also has a backup generator that's no longer, it no longer works. We haven't needed it anymore since it's strictly for irrigation, but we cannot remove that without either removing a wall or the roof to take it out, and so, we need to make them a little more user-friendly for us when we need to maintain it, and that's just a big piece of equipment we don't need in there anymore. And so, the best course of action on that is to take the whole building down, and then when we put the new one up, we're going to try and build the foundation up a little bit more to try and avoid the flooding issue as well. So, we'll do some extra improvements with that new building as well. So, the invitation to bid was placed on the city's website on February 27th and made available at City Hall. No denims were issued, and it was due on March 6th. One company submitted a bid, which was Why Not Construction. So, staff is requesting council approval to accept the bid from Why Not Construction in the amount not to exceed $33,050 for the replacement of Park Street and Vicki Street wellhouses.
So, this total demolition?
Yes, this is total demolition and new building, yes.
Stick built?
I believe that's what they're looking at, is a stick built.
And when will you guys be doing this?
Well, we were trying to get it done earlier in the year, but now, the irrigation systems are starting to fire up, so we may have to push it until there, there's a point where we can. Right now, with things as dry as they are, I don't really want to be, because the well will be down for probably a good couple of weeks while we're replacing everything, so I don't want to do that to them and have no irrigation water for all the grass, so. It'll probably be later in the year unless, for some reason, we get a lot of rain and we have a window of opportunity, so.
Have we worked with Why Not Construction in the past?
I believe they've done some different work with us. We've seen some of their track record, so, I mean, we have a pretty good idea how he works and everything, so.
All right.
Any other questions? I would entertain action.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from Why Not Construction in the amount not to exceed $33,050 for the replacement of the Park Street and Vicki Street wellhouses.
Second.
Have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution accepting a petition for annexation of the American Legion property and scheduling a first reading or public hearing on the annexation ordinance. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a petition that's going in front of council that is just confirmation of staff in this application is meeting the Colorado revised statutes, and that the petitioners are the owners of 100% of this territory. In this case, it includes the school district, which is highlighted in yellow, the county, which is our EOC building and property, which is in pink. The blue is city properties, and then BNSF is regulated from a federal level, so they have no opinion on the matter. So, this is a primary area we've been working with since last year when the city had acquired this property in efforts to further coordinate, as well as, you can see, there's a lot of cleanup we want to do at the same time, the half BNSF roads that deal with public safety, as well as the last portion of West Street there from the ditch up to the county, up to the railroad tracks. In addition, the other, the other segment as far as it relates to BNSF, we're picking up that half right away, all the way to Lake Street. So, this will help with several other issues, as well as moving forward with the code enforcement, potentially blight issues, those kind of things. In your packet, the petition you have is likely one that's unsigned. We have received signatures from the school district. The city signed their portion on it. In a moment, Mr. Swetzig of the county commissioners will have a couple of questions prior to their signature to it. In general, in your packet, you will notice that the statements of the petition are pretty much followed through 17 various items. And again, this is to establish setting the hearing process where we would go through all the formalities, all the formal public notifications as to the newspaper. I believe we have to do it post-it four weeks in a row, as well as notifying all adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the boundaries. Again, no, no private entities are involved in this effort, in this project. It's all governmental, but we're going through the same process as if it was a private initiated annexation. I guess from that, the other step that you'll see coming, which isn't fully identified on here, is once they're annexed into the city, we also address zoning. For most cases in this property, as is in others, once they're annexed, typically as far as planning zoning, building departments concerned, the existing use that's on there is typically considered non, maybe non-conforming. That's why we're trying to sign appropriate zoning that's a best fit overall for that area or any future development, and we try and anticipate that. As you all know, at any time, an applicant can come in and always request a rezoning of either a single parcel or a complete area or neighborhood. So, we will still continue to work on that. Generally speaking, most of this area around here is residential, but as mentioned before, the things that are involved in here in our zoning code as it relates to public buildings are all permitted uses regardless of the zoning we pick. The only variable that will come into that is even though public buildings like the middle school to the south is in an R2 zoning, they still have to look at the criteria set forth in the applicable zoning. So, that may be setbacks, building heights, those kind of things, so those would still have to be evaluated. But typically, in an annexation of an existing area, we consider it grandfathered, but any significant expansions, or if they demo something, bring it back up, then it goes and tries to meet with our current codes as much as possible. But again, in some cases, the property's too small. Sometimes a variance may have to come forward because you just can't have reasonable use of the property without. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I've got another, just kind of aerial, just to give you a little bit more of a visual of what's being included. The areas that you actually see aerial information are areas that are currently still in the county and not at the city limits. So, you can see, we're gradually picking up elements. All the things that are white are already in the city limits, just from a perspective of what's out there and what we're, what we're attempting to accomplish with this annexation. Largely, the BNSF railroad, you can see how many crossings are in the city and adjacency that hopefully that'll help a lot of different entities and agencies. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. If not, I believe Mr. Swetzig has a couple of questions or statement as it relates to the county piece.
So, this is just for accepting the petition for annexation?
What's that?
This is just for accepting the petition?
This is to accept it and to move forward and set the hearing date where we'll go and rectify probably some of the smaller issues. We've got some smaller items we've already identified over here where we're only picking up half roads of dual, and the petition says it's all or none. That's the current process. We don't want to have half county, half city, so we'll correct those lines. But this is just the action that we've met the requirements in moving forward, so.
Commissioner Swetzig?
Good evening, sir. First of all, thanks for, I don't know if you amended your agenda or not, but Brad told me this would occur about 9:30 tonight. So, glad we didn't have to wait till then. Our concern, you know, is just that we're able to continue to operate our emergency management facility, which benefits, of course, all of Morgan County, including the city of Fort Morgan, so we have certain different needs over there that might not meet the criteria coming up that we'd be subject to. So, if we could just have an agreement that we would work on exempting this from the regulations that are deemed to be connected to emergency management. In specifics, we were thinking of things like radio towers that might not meet your criteria, that are necessary there, Red Cross likes storied, so not necessarily always just Red Cross, but our emergency management services and things they might need to store there. And those are just some of the general uses, and then maybe also operation of a generator that might be a little bit noisier than is allowed in that particular zoning or that particular area. Things that, I think everything we're asking for are things that you'd be agreeable to because it will be part of probably everybody's in Morgan County's emergency management. Originally, this was called the Civil Defense Building, so it actually used to be a bomb shelter and everything else, but it's my understanding that that criteria is gone now. So, we're willing and, you know, encouraged by the fact that Brad's brought this before us to annex because we, you know, our particular culture right now within the county is that we would prefer to see improvements and development occur within the cities where proper infrastructure's available, and that includes all our incorporated areas of Morgan County. So, you know, it fits in that we would desire this to be in. It's just that we want to be sure we're able, Jason, to do the things we need to do without a lot of regulation in the future, especially, and it can be limited to and conditioned just upon things that deal with emergency management, so.
You talked about a tower. What type of tower?
You know, and I'm not a tower guy or a radio guy, and so, I don't know what that means even, but I do know that we have radio equipment there that needs to be able to pick up, and I have no idea what that means. I know lightning's cost us quite a bit of money the other, a couple of years ago out there when it hit our radio tower and fried all the equipment in there, so.
So, you don't need a tower?
It could be, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know if there's any tower people in the, in the audience that could tell me better, but whatever we needed is what we would like to reserve the right to put in, and obviously, we're not going to do something that's not appropriate, but.
Thousand-foot tower. Not a thousand-foot tower right in the red.
I don't think we could afford a thousand-foot tower, so I don't think you have to worry about that one. But, so, I guess we're agreeable to the petition as long as you can make a commitment to us that we can work on some type of agreement as we proceed with the zoning and work out some of those details, just like we have. And one thing I wanted to make certain, and maybe Mr. Wells can let me know, did we properly reserve or create an easement for the county?
Yes.
So, that's of record?
It was approved by the city council, and I think is on the property record, but we can get you a copy of that.
Okay, we wanted to be sure we have access into that, especially if you decide that you're not going to operate the facility and have somebody else have keys to it because it's really key to us, no pun, to have access in there at all times, so.
No, I...
I guess I'd like to hear, we're agreeable to signing the petition as long as we got a commitment that you'll agree to work with us on being, us being able to use that for its current use, which is as an emergency management facility and civil defense building. Lindell's probably the only one old enough, well, maybe a few, to understand what civil defense means.
Well, it is a building that really benefits the city of Fort Morgan as well because it is a county-wide emergency operations center, somewhat outdated, but down the road, it may be updated, maybe have some other things added to it, and, you know, I don't think we'd want to limit.
Yeah, you know, we negotiated a little bit with the school district because it would have been our preference to even vacate that particular site, but that didn't work out, so we still own the building. And it serves a useful purpose for us. We actually need it.
You're wanting agreement or work out an agreement that you'll be allowed to do. I mean, we can't just give you carte blanche.
Well, why not?
Well, and I think, and here's, here's the process.
Well, being that you reciprocate some worlds.
No, you know, and I don't think that it should be anything that, we're not asking for anything that would carry over to a subsequent purchaser of the property or owner of the property. It'd just be for, and it would just be in, as it relates to emergemath. We decided to use it for some other facility. I agree that, you know, we should meet all those conditions, because otherwise, we would just prefer to leave it there and operate it as, you know, and be able to operate as per emergency management.
So, tonight, we're just accepting the petition, right, Jason?
Correct.
So, I know that the school dis, or not the school district, sorry, county.
County.
I know, that was bad. So, the, I know that the county wants an agreement that goes along with this. Accepting the petition tonight, Jason, wouldn't foreclose the opportunity to have a separate agreement as prior to the process completing.
Certainly, and this would be a unique situation, I mean, what you were just talking about, if the county ever did decide to get rid of the property, you're not wanting this necessarily to run with the land for anybody to do anything they want there, so perhaps an intergovernmental agreement between the city and county per the operations. The other reality is, depending on how far into the future we're looking, land use code changes, councils change, commissioners change, and making sure that something's flexible enough to work with each other to come to a good result, but not necessarily put anything that would create future litigation or problems. And I think an intergovernmental agreement to that effect would probably be the best route.
Well, we'd entertain an option to purchase within that IGA, too, from the city, so.
You're not going to donate it?
City can buy it from you.
Yeah, and, you know, in relation to that, or maybe you all understand that we've initiated judicial-centered task force, and our current communication center is located in an area that could be taken out. And so, our long-term future plans, if we ever had the money, would be to create more of an emergency management communications off-site from where we are now so that we could cover both of those in the case of an unforeseen disaster. So, I guess we want a commitment before we sign the petition that you'll work with us on those, those type of terms that if they're reasonable.
And council can't take action necessarily on that tonight, but we can definitely sit down and work with the commissioners because we definitely want to work with them on this, as well as several other agreements that we're working with the commissioners on, the IGA and everything else, so.
Correct, and, you know, now we have our new planning zoning director finally. What a salvation for us. It's been needed that we fill that position, and it's a very knowledgeable planning zoning person that's been, will be able to work with Brad on those issues. Because we, like I said, our philosophy is to encourage the development within the incorporated areas of our county.
On that note, are you going to be around for item number 11 when we talk about, actually, number 12 when we talk about annexation policies? Are you going to stick around for like two more minutes?
Yeah, you were...
Brad's telling me, yes, I would be able to do that.
I think you'd like to, because, you know, the county may have some input on our policy, so.
Sure, and, you know, I apologize. Brad did present an IGA to us months ago, and we preferred to wait till we had our planning zoning administrator in, and, you know, we're more than anxious to get that ourselves. It goes both ways, you know? Sometimes we have an issue in the county that we're dealing with, and if I could just real briefly just speak to that... speak to that, we had a citizen complaint about the Western Sugar Company, and Mr. Wells responded to that email also. And we initiated today our planning and zoning administrator to contact the company and set up a public hearing or at least a meeting of some type, at least with city officials and concerned citizens. Because I don't believe that the commitment made at the time we approved the, the special use is being honored right now. So hopefully, we can encourage that to be a little more active.
We appreciate that.
Great, yeah.
And we've got a great relationship, I think, with the county. And commissioners work very well with us on, on issues that happen in the county and they, you know, things that happen in the city. And so I don't see that an agreement moving forward to make sure that they can preserve what they need there is going to be a problem because we work very well together. And, and we want to make sure that we're preserving each other's interests for the benefit of the taxpayers.
And I would like to compliment Mr. Curtis. He's worked with us quite a bit on the road issues and, and just other issues we have in the area. And I think we can resolve a lot of future issues, especially now that we have some new mapping online and stuff like that.
So we can get this signed just with working on it, getting some sort of an IGA together, Jason, with the county on this?
Certainly, I can start drafting something and we can get that process started. As far as it can't be approved, the IGA can't be approved tonight. It's not on the agenda. And we'll bring that back at a later meeting. But the petition certainly could, action can be taken one way or the other on that.
And we could do, could we do the IGA prior to the May 2 public hearing?
We can certainly do our best.
Does that work for you?
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not demanding or requesting any urgency to it. I mean, just that it gets done, just like the easement, for instance. And we're, we can take you for your word. So do you have the original? I mean, I'd be willing to take that if Brad wants to. You want to get it?
It's right here.
Okay. We'll, we'll take care of that. And I'd say thank you very much for allowing me to express those concerns.
And hang around.
Oh, hang around.
Yeah.
Kim's not expecting until 9:30 anyway.
It's fortunate that Brad gave me 6:30 because I did go to the fire hall and have my toaster before I came here.
Oh, toaster night.
Yes.
Yuck.
That was very important.
Just yuck.
With that, I would entertain a resolution to accept the petition for annexation for the American Legion property.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting a petition for annexation of the American Legion property and scheduling first reading and a public hearing on the annexation ordinance for May 2, 2017.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. What, my roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation and direction on operate, operational options for our fiber to the home network. Mr. Wells and Mr. Nation.
Yay.
Well, we've got some people also visiting tonight that are watching to see what happens with this. And we're really glad that they're here, and they've been a partner in helping us already start the project. And so I'm happy to announce tonight that two days ago with the partnership with Viera, we started the project, and it's underway. So thanks, Brent. Thanks, Ron, for getting things underway. Appreciate it. Tonight, we want to talk a little bit and get some direction from council on where we go from here. We've got a fairly large investment going in this year. We're working really hard to get that completed this year and then know what the next step is. Obviously, we know where we're at now, and now we want to make that next step. And we've done a lot of work on it. And I want to just turn it over to Brent to kind of recap kind of the process that we've gone through, where we're at now, and the decisions that we need to make and direction we need from council so that we can be prepared to make that next step to push this project forward. So thanks, Brent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My memo kind of outlines where, where we're wanting to take the conversation. But as we've moved through the initial design of the backbone and our consultants have worked with us on where we want to go to next, we realized that we needed to come to you and have a discussion on where we feel the end product of this gets to. And so we know we want to provide, you know, broadband services to our businesses and our citizens in the town. And we're at that point to where now we kind of need to decide which path we're going to go. We've had these conversations with you real briefly, but not as much detail as we have at the staff level. And so when we sat down and talked about it, we kind of decided there's, we're kind of at, there's three different potential directions we can go. The first one that I outlined in the memo is the one that we feel is least favored, but we thought it was worth throwing out there, is just to go ahead and just kind of end the participation on the city level. Go ahead and finish the backbone where it's at, allow us to utilize it, and then kind of just know that we have a robust fiber system in the ground that we could find somebody to use, but not necessarily what we want to do. It doesn't meet the goal that you guys gave us a couple of years ago to pursue. The second option that we've looked at and had some interesting discussions with people about is some type of public-private partnership where we actually bring in a company to basically be that end provider of services. We would go ahead and build out the system to where we're basically running fiber down all of our alleyways and everything, not necessarily going directly onto the property, but passing all the properties. And then it would be this private company that we would put under contract that would come in, complete the drop to the resident or the business, and then provide them with the service through our infrastructure, basically. There's a lot of, a lot of good things that we've identified with that. When you're dealing with those type of companies and some of them that we've talked to, you're gaining a level of expertise in this business that we don't currently have a staff. You know, our most knowledgeable fiber person is sitting behind the wall there, but there's just one of him. And there's, there's some concerns with if we get into this and we do this ourselves, which is the third option, we don't necessarily have the immediate ability to provide the services with the level of expertise that we want to see. Bringing in a company that has already got a track record for doing this, you're bringing in a company that has some of that built-in expertise already in staff levels and maybe able to populate staff people here, why we get systems up and running, why they hire people then and have them trained locally. There's also the, the other, the two biggest factors when we're looking at this type of public-private partnership, the two biggest factors that we liked at the staff level are the fact that we can get faster deployment with the system if we go with this type of deal. And part of that is, is that some of the companies that we've even had discussions with are willing to bring capital into this type of situation and help us get to that point where we can be providing services to as many people as quickly as we can. I know we've had several discussions, and it's come up in your guys' discussions with Jeff about, you know, how quickly can we get this done? And so there are some advantages to being able to work with that third party and get those things done at a quicker pace. When we started it, option three of my memo is kind of the direction we were heading. And that was what most people, and I refer to a lot as the Longmont model. We've kind of nicknamed it the Connect Fort Morgan model. Chelsea had thrown that out there. That would be a good name if we were going to name the system ourselves. And so we kind of now refer to it as the Connect Fort Morgan model, where we would go ahead and just develop the utility underneath the electric department and be that all-end provider, where we would have the crews that would go out and hook people up. And we would do the customer support when somebody's router isn't working. And, you know, they would pay their bill directly to the city for whatever services they wanted to do. Options two and three definitely meet the goal that, you know, council has set out for us. Each of them has some definitely good things and some, some bad things. But we definitely, at this point, need direction because our designer are sitting there going, okay, is this going to be something that we need to go ahead and design for a complete build-out? Or are we looking at, you know, having somebody come in? And so at this point, we need to have a discussion at this level so we know where to take our design ideas. And then if we do want to pursue the public-private partnership route, is there a specific methodology that you would like to see us pursue if that's the direction that council wants to go? So I guess the first one is, how are you guys feeling about us either completely running the system or bringing in somebody to run it?
And really, oh, go ahead.
I was going to say, I just had a few questions, and I don't know if you'll have specific answers and everything. But how much longer would it take without the PPP?
I don't know if I could give you a fair assessment at that. We know, we know that there are limits there that's going to lengthen that time out.
Right.
I don't know if doubling it would be a fair assessment. But we just, with the conversations that we've had with some potential partners, our consultant has done some homework with potential partners. And through those conversations, that's where we got the feel that we could definitely do it at an accelerated rate. But I, I don't think I could fairly make the statement of how much faster it would be. Just would be faster.
Just from a budgeting process, when you think about it, phase one, we're doing now is a one-year budget process from 2016 to 2017. Get this first part done in 2016. Now we're at the next step. We'll be looking at the next, you know, running by everybody's houses will be 2018 project because we'll have to budget for it. And when you look at that, then the, actually getting it to the home, marketing and everything else, you're going to 2019, 2020, if we can actually get the capital in place to build by everybody's house. We're probably looking at another $4 million to, to do the next phase of getting by everybody's house and everything else. So we've got to budget $4 million. Figure out, we're going to come up with that. And then, so what speeds this up is if you have the private partnership that is going to come in and infuse capital, and we work out the contract of how much faster are they going to be able to do that last leg and get out to everybody? That's where there's, you know, depending on how we contract with this company, how we can speed things up. Because we're not going through our budget cycle on a phase-by-phase basis. As soon as we private, get a private company in here, they're going to want it built out as soon as they can. They want to get that thing started because as soon as they put capital in the ground, they're going to want to return on investment. And that's really the, the balance that we're looking at is we, we want retention of control for customer service. And that's one of the things that we, when we discuss this with, with some of these companies is, my first question was, I don't care how much money you pay me. I want to know what the customer service is going to be. To us, that's the most important thing. For the fund that we've had with some of our other providers within the community, customer service is huge. And we want to have control over what's happening, at least on a customer service level, because we want to make sure we don't have the problems that we've seen in other places. So customer service for us is number one. That's why we have to retain control and, and have a contract with a private company if they're going to do it. So that at the end of the term of the contract, if they're not cutting the mustard, then we just go get a new sandwich.
That was my next question as far as ability to terminate and length of contract or anything where you're looking at this because of our past experience and having a lot of the citizens that end up being caught in the middle and everything with lousy service and a prolonged contract that was too punitive to us to be able to terminate. And so I wanted to make sure that we were looking at that part. So it sounds like you are. And then, cost differential, you're saying, okay, we're going to have to come up is $4 million, kind of what you've looked at and thought that it would cost as far as opposed to having somebody in a private business do that or what?
We've, the, the budget numbers are still very preliminary based upon what direction we go. And so we had some budget feedback from Manwiler that was in that, I think, $4 to $6 million range that we were looking at. But it had some differences in the type of direction we were going to go with the system. And so that's why we kind of need to narrow down on what path we're taking before we can narrow down on exactly how much to set aside for the budget. And that's why we're here now. So when I come back in
July.
July. I'll, you know, at that point, I will have a much better idea of what we need to set aside for the budget.
And to kind of explain the process, that there's two, two aspects to this build-out. There's putting the fiber, and then there's the lasers and the light show that go with it, the electronics that you hook onto the, to the infrastructure. And what we're looking at is building out that infrastructure. And that's when Brent's saying it depends on which way we go. If we decide to do it ourselves, we're going to buy a certain style of electronics and keep it systematic. If we go with a private partner, they may have a different set of electronics that they want to use. The fiber is universal. You can use that with just about any of the electronics components. It's just what are we going to use? The benefit of a private company is they already know what they're going to use. They've already got it in stock. And, and when they come in, they're going to, that's what they're, they're just going to set their, their equipment on our system and run it. So the costs depend on what that electronics hardware looks like once, once we get it into place.
It isn't, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is, with going with, I mean, as enticing as the Connect Fort Morgan option is, going with the option where we would public-private partner, doesn't that kind of split the risk a little bit? I mean, there's a, I mean, the risk is here if we try to do it ourselves.
Yeah.
Versus if we go with the public-private partnership, we kind of mitigate a little bit of the risk. We share the risk. We share the costs. So it's, to me, that seems like a much more safe approach. Plus, it meets some of the goals because we get it built out faster.
No, that's exactly right. That's a very valid point.
I had one more question real quick here and everything. What's the income differential? Because I know that, and again, you know, I might still, I think my overriding concern is getting it done as quick as we can, both for attracting business and for servicing our citizens and everything. But I know that it, and just like she was talking about, you know, income and risk are kind of opposite ends. And of course, you're balancing that out. But I was wondering if you had any idea as far as to the city, if it became our own enterprise versus our share with PPP? Do you have any idea what the income differential would be?
This is not directly. We've done some preliminary pro forma work on, on the finance side. Where this utility is going to be starkly different from other utilities is that we will be in a competitive market. And so we don't know and can't, we're playing with estimates on what we're going to be able to charge and receive for the service based upon the market. And, you know, will the other people drop their prices? So there's, there's a whole, there are a lot of unknowns in, in setting that out. But we did run some, I think, pretty good numbers based upon some pretty good assumptions. And the return on investment comes a lot higher, comes back a lot higher if we run the whole thing. The only problem is that we're running in the red for probably the first four to five years. So not only are you going to have a significant capital expenditure to build it out, but then you're going to have negative returns for the first four to five years in order to, you know, get it to where now you're cash flowing. The return over the long term, you know, a 10, 20-year return, you're, and you're, if you become very competitive in the market, is going to be great. If we're the only ones offering gigabit service and everything that goes along with that, the return's great. So I can't tell you what the differential is with a private. It's going to come down to the contract and how much we require them to put in, how much we retain as ownership, and what that contract says on what we're going to charge for them to be using our infrastructure. But the return on investment is significantly less with a private partner. But also that risk, as was pointed out, comes down significantly.
But your return on investment's sooner, though. Even with the public-private partnership, your return on investment.
Return on investment is faster. You start getting paid immediately.
Right.
Yeah, but we're not, you know, newbies as far as investment waiting for future return when you look at our water project.
This is true.
But. So a $4 to $6 million expense, that's just for the build-out running down the alleys? Or is that including hiring techs, developing this option three, buying the electronics? That pushes us out quite a ways.
It does. Some of that was included in. I don't, I didn't bring all that. Manwiler.
The electronics were included, I think, in that $4 to $6 million.
Yeah, the electronics were included. And then there was some assumptions made to increases in staff at like the electric department stuff that was included in that original number. But we, we started playing with that so much that eventually we kind of handed it back to the consultant because there was a lot of things we needed corrected. And we just have kind of left it in their hands until we've had this discussion. I mean, I guess we could rein it back in for them and, from them and get, you know, that back in front of us. But.
So the private option two.
So the private Option Two, the private-public partnership, they've already done a lot of their research or have done, the electronics they utilize. I know you guys have looked at specific providers for this. With them coming in and bringing some of their funds to get this up and going, because they make zero money unless we're up and going.
Absolutely.
Entertaining and option for down the road, us actually taking it over, once they've come in, got it established, going that route, to me, seems to be a little more of a expedite, expediting the process as well as giving us the potential down the road to recoup some of our funds and time that we would have to bring it up. I know that the private partner or private-public is kind of a favorable option for getting it up as quickly as possible, but we would still maintain some of the control with having it. I know the problems that we've had with Charter and Presnan and some of the past providers, we don't really have a contract with them, they pay a franchise agreement and pretty much do carte blanche what they decide they're going to do.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I mean, we don't, but this, we would have some control because we own the infrastructure and the backbone portion of it. So I guess from my perspective, Option Two is probably the most probable one, of course, that we could look at, which at some point down the road could get us to Option Three with us completely operating it. So, I mean, that's my...
Going with Option Two right now doesn't foreclose Option Three either, because we don't know what terms we're going to be able to negotiate. And so, to kind of give you a roadmap, what we'd be looking at, if you decided and directed us to do Option Two, likely we would go out with an RFQ, an RFI, basically Request for Information, Request for Qualifications. We would narrow it down to two, two would probably be more manageable, two or three companies that can meet the qualifications that we're going to require for customer service, for, you know, specs, for, you know, having the history and the ability to do this. I know we spent some time talking about those, I can't remember what they were, but we'd do an RFQ, we'd look at that, narrow it down to two or three, we would do some investigation and some preliminary contract negotiations with them to see what we could get, come back to council and discuss the negotiations and say, okay, what direction do we want to go? What are the poison pills? What are the things that you just can't live with? And if we can't get a contract that works for you, we always have Option Three. But I think what our recommendation or thought is, is if you go with Two, at least it gives us that opportunity to try and work with a private entity and see if we can't make that work, reduce the risk, and if we can't get it to a point that it makes sense for the community, we can always go to Option Three. But if we go straight to Option Three, we don't have that opportunity to see if this is a viable option for us, I think, is what we're looking at.
Well, and I think, as we've all kind of talked about, and again, repeating myself, I think that giving us the opportunity to try and get it done as quickly as possible just benefits us in a lot of different ways. I mean, it would be nice to know that we would have that utility for an extra source of income for the city in the future, but at the same time, I think this is one where we need to look more at the present than the future, other than what, just what you're talking about, making sure that we do have some control and that customer service is going to be a priority.
The other thing I was going to point out was, like Jeff said, if we decided, you know, we were going Option Three, we do have, you know, as far as from the city standpoint, the smartest fiber person is sitting behind that wall, but from private company people represented, the two gentlemen that are sitting over my shoulder are probably the most knowledgeable in fiber optics that I know around here, now that we're working with Viero, and they continuously offer up their services to help us as we move forward. If we go forward with some type of RFQ, I would encourage them to, you know, put in some type of proposal, but I know they have different ideas for what they want to see, you know, their involvement in fiber optics in the area. But they do continuously sit down with me and have discussions about what we're doing, and they're aiding us a lot. So I know we won't be completely out in the dark as we move forward with any of this, just because of the private expertise we already do have in the community. But my personal viewpoint is that Option Two for now is the best direction for us to go. The different companies that Manwiler kind of brought to us to just get a feel for what's out there, I think there are some very good options for us that would work quite well. And I would hope that if we do move forward with this type of process, that the same companies that we've already had some discussions with would come back and put in an actual proposal.
I think we all feel really good about Option Two.
Would you like to make a motion to that? A motion directing staff to proceed with...
He doesn't ask us for that.
Well...
I'll make one. John, can I make a motion?
It's just direction? Yeah, motion directing staff.
I'd like to make a motion directing staff to move forward with Option Two, with the public-private partnership option with our fiber optic fiber network.
Second by everybody.
I have a motion by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell.
I guess before you vote, I didn't ask if Representative Sum Viero wanted to say anything on this matter. I invited him tonight so they could come and listen, and if they had anything to say, they could. I mean, before they vote, you guys are more than welcome to add anything. You just need to come up with...
And has to sign in.
Has to sign in.
My name's Jeff Brown, Vice President, Viero Wireless. We came mainly to support Brent and Jeff and their decision to build out this network, and just to let them know, let you guys know, that, you know, either direction that you choose to go, we're going to be here to help and support you, whether it be Option Two and we're involved in that process, or Option Three where we're still helping these guys with our expertise. So we just want to bring that, you know, forward, that this project that we're currently doing with you, we would anticipate if Option Three ended up being the way that you go, that we'll be there to support you as a city, because we feel like this is a great, great move for the city and the community and the residents, and, you know, we'll be here, you know, for the long haul, so. So anyway, just, no, either way is fine for us as far as, we don't have an opinion, so to speak strongly, we just want to be here to support. So if you have any questions, then, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Hey, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for your assistance, greatly appreciated. Do I have any questions with Jeff?
Oh.
Nope.
The motion's still on the table.
The motion is on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank Viero, we appreciate your assistance. Next, we have a presentation and direction on annexation policy. Mr. Wells?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you, and I want to thank Commissioners Wetzig for hanging around for this. What we'd like to do is have some discussion about our policy as it relates to annexation. We don't have a real well-defined policy of everything we require with annexation. We generally follow the state statutes that define what we do, and we've been working really hard with the county to come up with joint or combined policies, joint doesn't work anymore, combined policies that help both jurisdictions manage growth. And one of the things that we do to try and offset, I think, the costs associated with providing water and sewer outside the city limits is that we charge double the rate. And some people are fine to pay the double rate and live outside the city. What that does is has a negative impact on the general fund, but it also puts the county in kind of a weird position. We have other things that come up with our utility billing that get a little bit weird with quality water and sewer and other things. So one of the things that we would like council to do is consider and allow us to add to the annexation policy, that if you wish to obtain or use city sanitary sewer, that you be required to annex into the city. And this wouldn't be for current people on the system, this would be for new development. So, you know, if somebody wants to develop near the city and they have access to the sewer or within so much distance from the sewer, we would require them to annex in their property prior to providing that service. The Health Department has specific requirements, and I don't know them exactly, and Brent or Brad may be able to speak to this a little bit more, but if you are building within so many feet of a sanitary sewer, 400 feet of a sanitary sewer, you're obligated to attach to that sewer and not have a separate sewer system. It's better for the environment and everybody in that process, plus it helps pay for the system. But we've had some situations in recent years where we've had people come to the city, they were within the 400 feet, they should have probably built the extension to, and it costs a little bit of money to add pipe and connect to the city system, but they wanted an exemption. We're very much pro-development, we don't want to cause people problems, but, you know, this went back and forth, and they got exemptions because we wrote letters saying, yeah, we would, wouldn't be against it because we wanted them to develop. We talked to the county, the county said, yeah, we're fine with you doing it, but you need to annex into the city. Long and short of it, they exempted out of everything, ended up in the county. Caused some issues, I think, not necessarily between the county and the city, but it brought forward the issue that we've got to be consistent for the county's benefit and for the city's benefit in how we annex in property and provide these services. The state is very clear about, you have to attach to sanitary sewer because it's what's best for the public health, and, you know, we think that that, if you're going to, you know, develop onto the city's utilities and services with, that you're required to annex into the city. We can't require that for gas and electric because those are certificated areas, and we provide both inside and outside of the city. But with sewer, we can require people to annex into the city, and we think that that's the way that we should go and the direction we should go. And I'll let Commissioners Wetzig speak to kind of the county's perspective and what direction they're trying to go with annexation. I think he kind of talked about it before, but I don't know if you wanted to say anything or, or I can say it and you can say I said it wrong, we can do...
No, I think you said it very correctly, Mr. Wells. The county runs into a lot of issues ourselves, and, you know, we maintain 1,036 miles of roadway, so when we do a subdivision that's even adjacent to the county, we do not take that road in, and we require a private maintaining of the road. So, you know, it'd be preferable, because that creates additional drainage issues then, because the drainage never is adequately addressed, and it doesn't attach to yours, and so we get those situations where it'd be way better for us if those properties and those subdivisions developed within the city. And that was one of the reasons, unbeknownst to me, and I was corrected by Brad, is that you do already have a zoning that allows a rule-like setting, including, does yours include animal unit?
Mm-hmm.
So you do allow some animal units, okay. So that should preclude the need to develop it in the county, and it helps with a lot of things, the West Street roads, the dual street south of the railroad track roads, and those type of issues. So we're all in favor, and we look forward to an IGA or MOU or whatever we call it, agreement with the city concerning that. Most recently, we did have a situation where a commercial property had been purchased that is in the county, and they had requested an exemption, and we immediately said, we're not going to get into the same situation that Mr. Wells just described, where the exemption was just to get things going and the intent was to annex. So at that case, we called up, it was you, Brad, wasn't it? Yeah, or Brad was there, you were there, and we had some of the sellers, representatives on the phone, and it was just discussed that whatever you wanted to do was fine, and you did it kind of as long as you met every city code, which means you might as well go ahead and annex to the city. And I think that worked out. I don't know if you've heard anything further on that.
Well, and I think that there's a myth that developing in the city's harder than developing in the county. We have the same building codes, we have a lot of the same requirements...
No, you don't have the same building code.
Not anymore.
You just, you just went, you went ahead of us.
Just a little bit, though, not by much. And I think that, you know, really, that we get it back and forth, you know? The county hears it from people who develop in the city saying, you know, it's harder to develop here than it is somewhere else, and we get the same things, it's harder to develop in the city than it is county. And I think, you know, there's that back and forth sometimes, but ultimately, the policy that we want to set is that if you can attach or required to attach to our sanitary sewer, and we have the infrastructure, it's required under state law that you have to annex into the city. And that sets a hard and fast rule, so we don't have these issues that we've had with exemptions and one-offs of who comes in and who doesn't.
I do want to provide one slight clarification for those properties that are not eligible for annexation because they don't meet continuity. The statute does provide that we can require them to have an agreement to annex, which we can then enforce through the district court if necessary. But basically, for those folks that might be two properties over, not eligible for annexation today, can still get sanitary sewer with the understanding that as soon as the city reaches them and we opt to annex them, they have to annex, and we move forward that way.
And that would be part of the policy, that, you know, either if you're not eligible to annex immediately because of contiguity, that you would execute an agreement that you'd be annexed as soon as we could meet that contiguity requirement under the state statute.
And like to point out, there are situations that maybe are major infrastructures, for instance, like a dairy, which might be brewery improper to be within the city, so it's not precluding development in the county either. And we'll always have the sprinkler corners and the areas of residential development occur in the county. So we're aware of that, but specifically, the adjoining properties are a big concern to us, and I think it worked really well this last time.
Mm-hmm.
We hope it worked, we haven't heard, I guess.
We'll see.
We'll continue, but unless you had any other questions...
Thank you for being here tonight.
I think we're in agreement with you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
So all we're looking for is a motion for direction to proceed with a policy requiring annexation in these circumstances that we discussed, and we'd bring back a written policy for you to review and consider and authorize, so that we would have that available for people who, when we run into those circumstances.
Do you have any questions on this? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion requesting and provide, providing direction to the staff to proceed forward with an annexation policy.
Second?
I have a motion by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Christine Casto. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next is consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda tonight includes Item A, approval of the dispersments and payroll for February, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the March 7th, 2017 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
On central auto parts for a battery charger, can we have that removed from there? It's for $2,375.06.
We'd have to remove the bills and dispersed, the dispersments and payroll as a whole to discuss that.
Did you not just hear him?
So one of the things that we can do, if that's an issue, and I know there's another issue that came up in the bills and dispersments, if you... issue that came up in the bills and dispersments, if you go ahead and authorize them, if you feel like that, I will get you complete report on the questions that come out. And down the road, if those things do come up, let me know, and I'll get those answers to you before the meeting if I can. So I apologize that you need explanation on that, and we don't have it right now. But I will get that for sure within the next day or two for you, if that's okay. Otherwise, the thing that we can do is pull it off, and I'll tell you the same thing. I'll try and get the answers to you as soon as possible.
Hold up dispersments and payments, so.
Yeah, we don't want to hold that out.
But I will definitely get you an explanation on that. So it's the battery charger from?
Central auto.
Central auto. Very expensive battery charger. I had one, too.
I will get those to you right away. Thank you for letting me know.
With that, I would entertain the consent agenda by resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the consent agenda and the payroll dispersment and the March 7 regular city council meeting.
Second.
A resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment for audience participation for items not on the agenda.
Yay, audience. We get excited when we have audience.
My name is Debbie Heisterman. What I was coming to the meeting for this evening was to talk about an ordinance that we have that a lot of people are completely unaware of. It is section 7-2-20, which is basically the animal at large. Recently, we have been, our code enforcers have been trapping cats. We have obviously feral cat problem here in town that we've, I'm sure, have had for quite a long time. But one of the problems that's happening is we're actually in these traps that they're setting, they're catching household pets. We've been talking to a lot of people to try to figure out through the Humane Society, through the Facebook pages, things like that. I don't know if you guys realize, but we hold an animal for five days, and then we try to, we do everything we can to find them a home locally. If not, then they have to be transferred out. And our problem is, is that people don't know to come down to look for their cats. It's strange. If your dog is missing, when you get home, you automatically start calling someone, but a cat can be gone for a day or two, and then you figure it's just going to be coming home. That's how we've all thought of our feline companions. But now that we're in this process, out of every 100 cats that we actually bring into the Humane Society, seven are redeemed. People just don't know. We first thought about trying to get it out there through the public utility bills, getting it on the radio stations, advertising, anything that we can. But we're trying to figure out a solution, if we can, of how, the way that it is worded, that it wasn't something that we were doing prior to that we are actually starting to do now. Do you have any questions on that so far?
So I think the idea is that with this ordinance, that basically cat at large is what it is, is it your recommendation that we eliminate that as an ordinance or modify it?
We're trying to modify it or figure out a way that we can modify it. If a resident calls and we've got a cat in distress, just like a dog is running loose and we're trying to catch it, or it's been hurt, and it's got to be brought in. But the city actually tickets the owners of a dog at large, and they never come in to ticket a cat at large. So it's just inundating us with these animals, which we've actually done a huge research in Fort Collins, done Friends League, all of the other facilities. They do what is called a TNR, which is the Trap, Neuter, and Release Program. And there are actual grants out there for that program. Right now, we're not allowed to release an animal back out. We have to get it adopted out, or after the five days, it has to be euthanized. We don't do that. We do everything we can, whether it's a barn program or something like that. But we are finding out that these aren't feral cats. These are actually friendly pet-owned cats that now, because of this ordinance or somewhere along the line, somebody decided that it's a good time to start doing it. It's just appeared that it's been a problem about the last three months.
Is it possible that the reason for the trapping is complaints from citizens, though? I mean, you do hear people that are not happy with other people's pets, I use that term loosely, that are roaming the neighborhood, doing their business on other people's yards. And, I mean, they have every right to request, you know, from our code enforcement officers to have those animals trapped.
Absolutely.
And so I guess I wouldn't assume that it's a feral issue because I don't believe we have a feral issue. There are probably pets, but...
But what I think, I think what you're saying, the issue is that people are not aware that their pets are at the Humane Society because most generally, we don't look for cats. I've had to go make bail on mine several times. Yes, and that was the last place I thought to look. But I think the problem is that the public needs to be made aware that if your cat doesn't come home, check the Humane Society, because they're not checking for them. They're just thinking they're going to come home.
And another thing is, is we don't trap dogs. You don't have, you know, you could call the code enforcer as a dog owner or as a neighbor that's having a problem, and they have to catch the dog. These are traps that are being set out to catch whatever is coming across the line or in the facility.
Do we know that for a fact, or is it, I guess, I would like more information as to whether, you know, why we're doing it. And if we are doing it, are we in, truthfully, if, you know, Fifi, you know, shows up and they come to get Fifi, I would assume we are doing an animal at large. Fine. Christine, can attest to that?
No.
No. The thing is with dogs, that's an issue that we'll talk with the code enforcement about. But under the ordinance, we should be enforcing that provision that if your cat is picked up, then it's a cat at large ticket. I guess equality among the species, you know. If you're doing it for a dog, you should do it for a cat. That's why they probably adopted that. But I think the real issue, potentially, if I've understood you correctly, is that lately, we've been bringing in a lot of cats.
Yes.
We're not, if somebody redeems their cat, there's obviously a potential ticket associated with it, but also there's cost of care that goes along with it. And the Humane Society spends an awful lot of money taking care of people's animals that, at this point, they're not getting reimbursed for. And I think if somebody really loves their cat, and I think that's the big issue why you're here, if somebody loves their cat and it's missing, they may never see it again if they don't know where to come and get it.
And that flip side to this is our problem is, is that they'll come in on that 10th day or the 11th. I thought, somebody told me that my cat was in here, and we've had to send it off and it be adopted out. You've heard those stories. And, well, we can't keep animals forever. Most cats are very hard to keep in a fenced yard. Citizens, most of the times, you squirt a cat with a hose or whatever the case may be, it doesn't want to come back to that. These cats that we trap, if we do get to get them sent home, they're smart enough, they're never going in that trap again. So I'm just trying to figure out how we can do this, because we are. That's, out of that 100 animals or cats, that's 93 that we're having to spay, to neuter, to give shots, and to find homes. What other solution can we come up with with this particular instance with our feline friends?
And the Fort Collins program that you're talking about, because we personally adopted a cat through that program. And so they have a lot of statistics that would be good, you know, to have that show that, for lack of a better word, the catch-and-release program up there, because they do have a feral problem.
They do, and they have actually...
They found a way that if people catch the cat and bring the cat in, they, you know, they spay or neuter it, you know.
They clip the ears, they do the spay and neutering.
And they, and I believe they chip them.
They do chip them, too.
So.
And there are grants that are available for that. So those are things that we can go in that direction. But I'm just trying to figure out how, all of a sudden, that we have this, this big number of cats coming in and how this ended up happening. When did the traps start getting put out, and did we just go out and buy a dozen of them? Because all of a sudden, we've got as many cages as we have, and they're completely full at most times, and we have to hold them for five days. So our back is against the wall. And if it was a scenario that it wasn't so easy to call code enforcer, and you just did go out there and squirt them or get them off of your lawn, but I don't know. Is it a scenario that they're roaming, or, you know, we're trying to find the details of all of this out, too, and it's been just impossible.
We should be able to get that.
So, yeah.
Some information for, right?
Mm-hmm. We'll get working on it and figure out, and if there's modifications we need to make to the ordinance as we sit down and work with you and the Humane Society. And I think the big thing is getting the word out. I know we have Twitter and Facebook. We can say, "Lost your cat?" and direct them to your Facebook page or website. And I don't know if you post pictures of animals that are found on there.
Let me try.
Yeah. But you're welcome to anybody stopping at any time, right?
Oh, yes.
Just come in and...
In fact, when somebody calls and says, "We've lost my cat," it's black and white, well, we may have four of them in there. Please, come in.
Two.
You got mugshots, you know. What was the cat that got away?
Yes, we'll do two of them. And we'll actually talk a little bit more about that TNR program because that is, they have really done some research on this to where it has cut the feral population almost in half because you're not taking them away where they feel like they have to keep breeding to keep their numbers. They go back, and then, of course, their natural death because they're living out in the elements, whether it's dogs or traffic or whatever, that gets those numbers down. There's been a lot of research in that. Or having help to be able to do it that way would be nice, too.
Well, we appreciate you bringing this, bringing it to our attention, and we appreciate the job that you guys do there.
Yeah, it's just, we've, there's no way of being able to get this out. And if you guys have got any type of ideas or anything, people don't know. They just think their cat has just gone wandering a couple of extra days, and it'll be home. I wish they would all stay in the yard, but they don't. And they don't collar them because they're afraid. They're out, they're running around, they're over the fences, and they don't want them to get caught on a collar. So is it something that hopefully we can look into to see if we can change the ordinance at all or be able to adjust it where the feline population is?
And at this point, because it's not an action item, we can't do anything tonight. But certainly, I think Jeff has got an idea to look into the issue, and we can bring it back to council after getting some additional information as to what action might be appropriate.
And if you need any, any information from me, I'm willing to help in any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One thing I might offer real quick that you brought up and everything like that is, have you tried contacting the radio stations and just asking them to mention that, too?
Well, I was actually on the radio station, Be 106, the other morning, and I did put it out. So I'll just try. We'll just continue, and if everybody can, but...
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, if they, if you ask them in particular, "Could you just, quick mention sporadically throughout the day and everything like that, that you might get some cooperation from them rather than you specifically when you are on the radio?" Just saying any way that is a public service for people that, and families that are missing their pet, that you could just give a brief blurb that if you've lost your cat, don't forget to contact Humane Society. Then take up a lot of time or anything like that. I'm sure The Times would probably put something in there.
Perfect, yes.
And you're on the Lost Pets of Morgan County website page.
Oh, yes.
Because that would, to me, would be a really good place. And see if you can't get the owner of that page to pin it, so it stays up at the top.
That would be nice.
And then every time somebody comes in there looking for Fifi, you know, they'll, you know, we can even link them back to, you know, the city so they know where to call.
This was just a frustrating situation. It's been going on for a few months now, and we're just finally needing to come in here and find out what kind of help or resolve we could get with this one. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Is there any other audience participation or reports by officials and staff? Jeff?
Just a couple of things, and maybe there's some more information that can be provided by other directors. But just want to mention again, we kicked off the fiber project. I want to thank Viero Wireless and their partnership on that. I think that's going to be a great project this summer, but we're underway. And I know we're in the process of bidding out the rest of the labor to finish it out. We've got all the materials in the yard. They look great, miles and miles of it. And I know we're taking up lots of space that's going to, we'll get rid of it eventually. It'll go underground. We'll bury it. Not like cats, but we'll bury it. So one other thing is the Sugar Factory. Just want to point out that we've been getting a lot of calls, and I don't know if you're getting a lot of calls, but on the Sugar, Great Western Sugar website, there should be a phone number that you can call, and we can maybe put that phone number on our website or somewhere for people to call if you have concerns. But they have set up a hotline where you can call and let them know where you live and your complaints. And I think there's also a potential email address, and we can get that out of somebody that you can email with your complaint. But as part of their special use permit, they're required to log and provide a report to the county commissioners on all of the complaints and what they're about. You know, it's one of the things where the commissioners, I think, are working with us very well, where it hasn't happened in the past with issues at the Sugar Factory. And we are pro-business. We want businesses to do well. But we also are very serious about the health and the concerns of the citizens. And I know that I've received complaints about smell, noise, and dust in recent weeks, and I know that others have as well. So we're going to give people an opportunity to provide that feedback to Great Western Sugar, just to help them out to understand what's going on. I think that's really what they need to hear, is, you know, where is this smell at? Where's it coming from? What can they do to work on it? Because I know that's something that they, they're aware of, and they're trying to work on it. But I think the more people that call will give them better information on how they can address the issue, what days it's happening, what direction it's going, those kinds of things. So I know spring cleanup is coming up. I don't know, Brad, do you have any further information for the viewing public on spring cleanup?
It starts Saturday.
It starts Saturday, and there are specific areas we're picking up at different weeks. It'll be a month long. This tends to stretch out. Am I saying it wrong?
Yeah.
Good, good. Thanks. I knew I could get you up here.
Yeah. Yeah, it's only a week long, but generally speaking...
Oh, it's four weeks long.
But it takes that long for us to pick everything up. And part of the reason is, is we try and go through the city from one quadrant to the other. However, if people don't drop it off on the first Saturday, and they may drop it off on Wednesday, we want to make sure we pick it up. But the key is, we've gotten some good calls and questions. But for the most part, I know the paper, it's been in the paper, and it's been announced. You can always call the hotline number again on what can be dropped off. But for the most part, once the program's done, it's not a year-long effort, which sometimes tends to be the belief. And so the continual adding furniture, mattresses in the alleys, those are actually special pickups. And so when those continue to occur, we'll find those owners and try and work with them. So, and we just don't want to ticket people. So use the dumpsters as appropriate.
Well, and I think one of the things that's important, and I want to add on to that, spring cleanup's a good time for you to put stuff out for us to clean up. It is illegal, and it's against our codes, to put anything outside that doesn't fit in... and it's against our codes to put anything outside that doesn't fit in your dumpster and not call for a special pickup. We have received numerous complaints from citizens about people dumping stuff into the alleys. So I will tell the paper and everybody that's here that if you see anybody dumping stuff in the alley, call the police. Just call 911 and say, "We've got somebody illegally dumping in the alley." Now, if they have called for a special pickup, we'll know and they won't get a ticket. But there is some concern that we have people who don't even pay sanitation, for sanitation services, dropping things off next to dumpsters. And then it sits there, and it sits there. Because our weekly pickup isn't set up to pick up and stop and pick up those things. Those are special pickups. It takes a different schedule. And so, if you want to help, you know, we had to do an increase in sanitation this year. We're doing an increase next year. If we don't want to have continued increases in sanitation, because we may just have a special pickup crew that has to go out all the time and everybody's going to pay for it in their rates, call the police if somebody's dumping something next to your dumpster, because the rule is, if it doesn't fit in the dumpster, we don't pick it up without a special call and a special pickup. And it's against the law to, to dump stuff out there. And so, we need the help from the citizens to, to help us and the police know. If you see somebody out there dumping and you get their license plate number, get that information to the police. They'll follow up and, and take care of it. But it is an issue that we're trying to address. And we can't do it one complaint at a time and go out and clean it up every time. It's, it's becoming problematic. We need people to follow the rules, which is if it doesn't fit in the dumpster, you have to call for a special pickup. It does cost you a little extra money, but it's illegal to be dumping stuff outside the dumpster. If you see somebody in your alley that's suspicious, looks like they're dropping off stuff that they shouldn't be next to your dumpster, feel free to call the police. You don't even have to go out and talk to them. If you feel like the police aren't going to get there in time, get their driver's license, or their, yeah, go out and take their driver's license down.
Don't pin it down.
License plate.
We don't want that happening.
And give that information to the police and they can follow up on it.
We squirt them with a water bottle or the hose too?
Yeah, I don't know if that works, squirting them with the hose. If they, they may, they may not come back to your dumpster, but they may find someone else's. So, tickets work better.
Just so the public is aware, the maximum penalty for that ticket is a $2,650 fine. It falls under the general provisions of the ordinance. Not that that will be the fine, but that could be the fine. So if you are illegally dumping, please stop, or you'll come to the S in court.
What is a, a special pickup, like 25 bucks? So $35 is a lot cheaper than 2,000. I would just encourage people to, you know, call for a special pickup, or, you know, if it's not your stuff, be sure to call the police. So, what, what I'd like to propose, if council is, one last thing is up for this. Now, we're putting tubes in the ground, but we're going to pull fiber. And, and what we'd like to do is put together a special ribbon-cutting ceremony for the first fibers that go into the ground, if you would be interested in that. Is that something you'd like to do to kick that off? Great. Well, we'll get that put together and let you know the dates and the times when they get ready to pull the, the cable in a couple of months away. When they start pulling the fiber through, we'd like to really kick that off and show everybody and, you know, it's a big deal. So. Anybody have anything else? Chief, did you have anything? No one else? All right. That's, that's all we've got tonight.
Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is accepting sealed bids for a four-wheel-drive, half-ton pickup until 3:45 PM on March 23rd, and sealed bids for the fiber backbone construction project until 4:30 PM on April 6th. Under meetings, the Museum Heritage Foundation will meet on March 23rd at 4:00 PM in the museum community room. I guess that would be the Howard Rolland Community Room. And the next City Council regular meeting is April 4th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. I think we've covered the spring cleanup.
Thanks, Brad.
The Fort Morgan Police Department is expanding its Coffee with a Cop program after a series of six events in February that was very successful. The next, the first two of this year-long program will be on Tuesday, April 4th at 9:00 AM at McDonald's, hosted by Sergeant Kevin Miller, and Monday, April 17th at 7:00 AM at Arby's, hosted by Sergeant Tony Galliano. And the Fort Morgan Museum is hosting a trivia night for teams of two to five adults on Thursday, March 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And there are only five team spots available, so anyone interested should register right away.
With that, Clint, would you like to say anything?
No problem. Eighth grade parents' night was a success.
Very good.
But, sorry I'm late.
Thought we were trying to get it done before you got here.
Well, I, I tried to get out of here. It's just those parents, you know?
I hear you.
I am all about the kids. Kids first.
There you go. With that, meetings adjourned.